Alright, it's nine oh three AM, we'll begin this.
They're coming.
Maybe by case of the local or maybe by case of not by name.
Alright, Andy.
Okay, it's nine oh three AM, we will begin this work session, Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Uh, we have buzz, buh, buh, budget. Budget presentation. On the agenda today. Budget something.
Alright, so we've got a couple of things we're gonna cover today. Uh, we're gonna talk about capital request. And talk about the Q four updates and dashboard that should be your packet. Um, it sounds like there might be an issue with the way that this was published, so I'm gonna republish the link with Justin and send it to you so you can click through the dashboard like, uh, we did at the work session. But I'll show it to you today, but I wanna make sure it gets back out to you. You guys just don't have power via licenses on your laptop. So the way the link is published determines how you can look at this. So I'll look at it with you during, but then send it to you so you can dive into it. Um, and then talk about the twenty twenty six overview, the mill levy, and then I have a couple of just talking points on where we're at, what our over under is, things that have changed in the last few weeks. We put a quote back from CTSI for our workers' comp, which we always know it's gonna come in in the month of November. Um, and we've learned of a few other items like, uh, the homes, the housing at ten two, those need to be insured as they sit there until they sell. Um, that have changed some of our expenses, so we've got roughly three hundred thirty seven thousand dollars to cut from the budget still. Which is fine, I mean, that's just how budgets are. Things come in, we have to readjust, but those aren't things, I don't get to say, no, I don't like your workers' comp quote, we won't do that. Uh, so then we have to go and look for other places to, to make cuts. I've got a few suggestions, um, four places we can make cuts. Um, and a few decision items you guys want to, um, be thinking about. What decisions you wanna make? We've got a meeting scheduled on December fourth where I'm gonna ask you guys for guidance on where you're going to set the mill. This is not certifying the mill, but I base the budget off of the mill. So I kind of need for you guys to decide what you're going to do, and then we'll come back and certify it on the eleventh. Um, and then we'll adopt the budget on that date, but I'd like to get guidance about what you want to do. Um. What you want to do before, um, before I have to reset numbers. Um, sorry. Okay. Working two screens here. Okay. Alright, so we're gonna work, uh, through this document. And then, um, we'll stop and let you guys ask questions as we go. Minimize those, nope. Sorry, I'm working two mouses on two screens right now.
Double thisted?
Yes.
It's like patting your head rather than your.
I would like to hide that.
Times one thousand.
Yeah. There we go.
Is that better?
Yes.
Is that just at the top then, is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
Alright, so we're gonna talk about capital requests, we've got, um, Mr. Michael here with us. I, um, had a few other small capital requests, but they were things like, there's a hole in the library roof, and we're gonna ruin the building if we don't put the roof on it. That is already in the budget, because to me that's not a capital request, it's a hole in our building's roof before it snows. So that is in there. Hundred thousand dollars, we don't get to opt out of like putting something over the.
Is it the whole roof, or is it just a patch on the hole?
I think they decided.
The whole roof is being replaced, but right now there's a section missing.
Yeah.
Um, dispatching that section is really not gonna help a whole lot, because a lot of the roof jacks and stuff are not connected anymore to the roof.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Water, books, bad.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially this building, bad.
Yeah. So we're doing what we can do, but we recognize that's not a thing we can not put in there, so that was our, that was included, but that was really the only thing we included in the budget was covering a gaping hole in the top of the building. Um. Okay, so I wanna talk just a little bit about a few things. So capital requests. Um, these are big, usually one-time investments for the next budget year. Buildings, vehicles, equipment, IT infrastructure, uh, usually really big purchases. Um, those get planned through capital plans, uh, and compete for limited amounts of funding. Um, because our budget's so tight, we don't really have much to put towards capital requests. However, we really are trying to get that capital, um, improvement plan in place and get information back about, hey, what all do we have, what all doesn't need? Uh, one thing we're working on in IT next year is we have never had um, a plan for replacing all of our, our laptops. Uh, when it's time to do so, we just replace them one at a time as they break or don't work anymore. Um, and so that is one of our really big investments this year. Um. Is that, um, that we really want to work on having a plan, knowing our laptops will roll out, getting bulk government discounts to buy them all at the same time from a vendor giving us a government like discount, things we just have never, ever done, and also actually tracking all of our digital assets so that we're making sure we get those back for people when they leave, so they're barcoded. We know what we have, we know where it's at, we know when to grab it when someone has headed out the door. All things that are new for us at Lake County Government, so while we're talking about capital, we know the IT items are those. We don't have any requests this year, cuz we don't have a plan before, but we are going to. Um, so that's one of the big lifts for us this year and something that will, as we build that capital plan, we'll be able to say, hey, we know in three years we'll be looking at X number of laptops or devices, so. You don't have those requests this year, we've pretty much kept our requests pretty tight until we know what we have and you know what you have on hand. Um, supplemental requests, uh, those happen throughout the year, those are brought to you guys, that's when something comes up that someone hadn't planned for, and they say, hey, I've got this project, so like we, we had a few supplementals come up, or some of our supplementals this year have just been.
Budgeting.
Rogue IDAs that we didn't know existed, or the DA coming back and having some extenuating circumstances. And those changes can happen to the budget throughout the year, they come to you guys, we post them publicly, people get to give input. We approve or don't approve. Um, discretionary funding, those are flexible funds that'll be left over uh, after required ongoing costs are covered, so if you guys melt higher, and you'll see at the bottom of those discretionary funds, those would be additional funds you have to put towards projects or towards paving or towards whatever, uh, it is. Um, so that, that's when you see that discretionary at the bottom of the mill table. Okay, we do not have very many capital requests. Um. The airport de-icer was a capital request, uh, this will be pushed to twenty twenty seven. I have asked for us to explore an older de-icer that lives at the airport to see, uh, if it could be brought back to life if there's an issue with it. It sounds like it seized up once before it was fixed.
Seized up like the motor or the, the pumps that pump the de-icer or?
Seized up and it was fixed, and it sounds like it's not everyone's favorite tool to use, so maybe it doesn't get used. So I said, hey, I wanna explore that option first, I wanna see proof of concept. If that smaller de-icer we have on hand, i- if we say, hey, we'll use it, document how much we're using it, give some data for me if there is information to, to really say, hey, this is worthwhile, this would bring back in the money we would spend on it, then we'll bring it back up. But I, I do wanna say that Josh had asked for it. Um, and let you know that it will be something that I think will come up. If we have extra funds, it would be something that I do think could be helpful for the airport, cuz a lot of people decide not to fly in if they don't know that they're gonna be able to get back out. So I'm mentioning it here even though I had originally said, no. You don't get to put that out there, but I was like, well, we should put it out there.
What, what do we know?
We just don't have it in the budget.
What do we know thus, like, so far about that? Like, Mike, do you know what year, make, model that truck is, or?
Actually, it's not a truck, it's a trailer.
No. Yeah.
It gets a little at the, the airport type. Um, purchased it from.
From DIA.
Lovelands Airport. Back in, probably the ten, eleven?
Yeah.
And I, I never really knew what was wrong with it, why it didn't work, or what it needed. Um. I just know that we didn't ever move forward with spraying, I know there was a lot of things issued with CD-PAG and glycol on the ground and testing, soil testing and stuff that could be required.
I think Josh has checked into it.
Yeah, Josh alleviated our concerns with that. So it's basically like a pressure washing trailer that has a motor that runs the pumps that pump the de-icer out.
Yeah, so it has like a little, like a Honda motor.
Okay.
A model.
Okay, so we're not looking at replacing the V eight diesel engine, it's kind of, the motor is a pressure wash style.
Yeah, pretty much that's what it is, is a pressure washer with a big tank on it.
Yeah, wow.
This is some additional commentary that I've talked to Josh about a little bit. Um, it, he does have some safety concerns about folks out at the airport using it, because it does require getting up on ladders. I mean, it's snow and ice, and so I think there's, there's a little bit of that to, to walk the work through as well.
It doesn't have like a lift ring.
The new one does, right? The new one has like a man bucket?
Yeah, that one like a man bucket.
Okay.
People de-ice their own planes?
Um, I don't think we let them do that.
This is for the runways, isn't it?
No.
It's a sort of hangar wing.
Oh, okay.
So, right now, the winter traffic, then we get in, if it can't get into a hangar, um, a heated hangar, then it has to sit outside. And if it gets ice on the wings or anything.
Yeah.
It can't take off.
At a minimum, I'd love to record how many requests we get that ask to come but don't come. I guess that's one thing is, A.
Yeah.
I've gotta go cut money from the budget, it's not like I have extra fluff.
We need some market research to determine like what is the ROI for this piece of equipment.
Yeah.
And I get that that's tricky if, like, historically we haven't had that, but I'm sure, I'm sure there, we could do some comparisons in market.
But I do know that there are, are people, especially the, um, charter flights that come in, people, you know, charter flight to come in to go skiing, because I know airports is within an hour's drive of seven different ski areas.
Yeah.
Or closer than Eagle is to Vale.
Oh, that's funny, didn't think about that.
Passes over, but we are.
Yeah.
I will say, this is one of the things, those things, and also I wanted to mention it now, is if, I was really conservative with our sales tax numbers, because I just don't wanna plan for it to be phenomenal, not knowing what the yeah, what the market will do. Um, if it looks like our sales tax numbers are really tracking along higher and are gonna, you know, cuz we project them out as we receive them mid-year, this is something I do think we could circle back to, we are like, hey, great news, sales tax was way better than the conservative number we held it at. This is something we could consider. It's not that I don't think it's valuable, it's just in the face of cutting even more from our budget, I don't know that that's the, the smart thing to do is throw a de-icer somewhere in there and cut services. Um, the other item is the landfill. We wanna mention this cuz it's three billion dollars, and at some point we're gonna actually have to replace it, and so I've asked Michael to come and talk about it, because we really do need to start to have a plan for it.
Yeah, so, uh, did you get what I'm saying?
Yes, yeah, okay.
So this is just the map, so I can kinda show you what we gotta do out there? Yeah. Um, basically, twenty seventeen, they had approval for a three-year, three-acre site, that's now full. Um, CD-HG, CD-PAG said we would no longer be able to do anything on this part of the landfill. Right now, it's currently in the landfill, so we can build it up a little bit. But, um, they won't let us do anything without, without the landfill being lined. Um, so since this is still open, that's where we're building right now, but the new section that we're looking at, at building is over here. Um, it's about an eight point six acre site, that's the three million dollars to completely get that operational. Um, I don't think I really need three million dollars right now. If we contracted all out to other people, I think we would need that, we'd have to make sure that we pay it. Um, I've got, um, Colorado State Forest Service working on possibly getting all the trees removed that we need. Um, maybe even through a lumber sale or whatever, through them. Um, I don't know that we'd get funds for it, we're just getting rid of the trees.
We would have to pay someone to come and get the trees out.
Yeah, so, I mean, they would basically take the trees and it's obviously being paid. Um, we do have to remove, relocate that road to around here. Um, carry on forty-five B is just a little bit further west, that we could just go there, I think, and get back over to this area down here. And, and get around the landfill. Um, road bridge can do most of that, cuz the road already exists. Once we get this cleared, we have a gas well that's right here, that would have to be moved out to here. So we'd have drilling expenses for that well. And this well that the state put in right in this area would have to be moved over here someplace outside the landfill. That's a groundwater well where we test the water coming off the landfill. This is a gas monitoring where we test the methane coming off of it. So it just, it, so right now it's outside the landfill, but we'd have to move it again.
Yeah.
We have another one, and I, I'll show you as, as this all progresses, we have another one gas monitoring well up here. Right now, the only one that is producing any gas, it's about right in here. Um, so we, we did move another one further up towards the property line, we still don't have any gas migrating that way, because this is private property up here.
Yeah.
So we're really worried about it going that way, if we're not keeping it in the landfill. But there's ways to mitigate methane coming off the landfill, all landfills have it.
Yeah, I've seen like a lot of them have like what looks like white PVC, like, sticking out all over the place to fend.
The plane on top of it.
Okay. I didn't know they burned them in the distance.
Denver Rapid Site in Denver, they collect all their meth, like methane, and run it through their power generating plant.
Cool.
So they generate power for like a neighborhood that's right close there. Um, so there, there, there's ways to get rid of it that's not, um, environmentally unfriendly.
Yeah.
Um, do you want to go to the next?
Yeah.
So this is just a little bit different, this is just landfill here, the slope's already down, so we'll actually be building up against this landfill, but it will have to be lined every time we get up against it, so it doesn't contaminate that soil again. But you'll see, it's got a sub down here. So everything down here will be lined with rubber, it'll all flow to one place. Then we'll have to pipe it out and either, we can put it back on this part of the landfill that's lined, so that it keeps going back through the landfill and eating up more garbage.
Yeah, cool.
Um, we can spray it on the road, dirt roads around the landfill, keep dust down. Um, or we would have to, if it depends on what it has in it, we could take it to sanitation and they could clean it out.
Yeah.
So we could swap with sanitation, we used to take their sledge, now we can, they can take our leach aid.
Yeah, totally.
And clean our leach aid out.
Leach aid?
It's leach aid. So this is basically the whole permitted land site, right, landfill right now. Um, that section is right down here where we're talking about working. Um, so this is what with CD-PAG is our certificate of designation for landfill. So we have all of this area to work with. Right now, the existing landfill is this in here. And that three-acre site was just added on to this point out here. It's all up to the same level as the landfill now. Um, that's why we're looking at building any of them. Like I said, I, I don't think I need the full three million dollars unless we go off our contract, and then we would have to have it on there. I think we can do a lot of dirt work with the landfill staff. I know they're gonna need dirt, you know, trash, they can bring it up and store it up here. Um, and that, this has, is, has to be about twenty-seven feet deep total excavation. Um, so it'll, it'll, we'll be able to save the dirt for future placement on the landfill. Um, but I think landfill staff could do a lot of that, or road and bridge could help, you know, like moving the roads and stuff. And that's all preemptive, the only thing I, like, I would have to spend money on like this next year is moving wells, cuz I gotta be, what do we do before we start digging?
Do you have a number on?
Um, I don't off the top of my head, but I do, the engineer has a, a price for them in the package, I just didn't grab them this one. One more picture? This is when the landfill is completely full, two hundred and sixty years.
Wow.
Let's go scan.
These are all.
How's this set, it's getting a little fourter?
This, this is the section that we're looking at filling right now.
Yeah.
Expanding to, but these are all different sections of filling. Um, landfill is about ten thousand three sixty, which is about this line right now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this point up here is ten thousand five hundred and ten feet. So it's another almost two hundred feet.
Yeah.
Feet high.
There are legit north Midwest ski areas that are built on landfills.
Yeah, I told, told Robin to them who called it a man.
The one behind the Safeway, too.
Yeah, there's a.
That's where they used to go, that's where they used to go practice.
Two of the cool bottles are.
Unfortunately, the only grants that they're offering right now is to clean up old landfills like that, which is not a county landfill, it's like in the county, but it's not a county landfill.
Oh, that is interesting.
With a city landfill.
It's all private, private property behind them.
Yeah, it's all private property now, so.
Tell them about the grant, so they can.
Yes.
The love, love, love the G word.
Michael, I thought that the most of the expense would be the actual liner, is that true?
Yes, it is, it's for the rubber lining, and it's got like two or three layers of clay also with it.
Wow.
And the clay would have to be imported into Lake County, we don't have that type of clay. And we have clay, it just doesn't meet the permeability that's required for the landfill.
So is the liner an actual rubber liner, or is it like a combination?
HDP liner.
Okay, yeah. Wow, it's a big swimming pool liner.
Pretty much, that's exactly what it is.
Wow.
And then we just fill it with dirt.
Yeah.
Um, when we have the protection factor that we have to worry about, when filling it, also it has to have like a layer of sand on top of that to keep separation and flowable.
Yeah, make sure it doesn't pierce, get pierced.
Yeah, and then, once we start putting trash out and you get a good layer of trash, um, the compactor and everything can run out pretty good.
Nice, gotta set a base.
Um. I wonder how to approach the subject with the community of like, if you can reuse it, I know we do this all the time in some ways, but.
We are so good at that.
We're also working on that big grant with EPA right now.
Yeah.
Recycling grant, to build a new building, recycling building out there, um, have an anaerobic digester that eats food. Um, to actually power that building, um, or heat that building. Um. We should know next month.
Yeah.
That's our Christmas present, by the way. It's the same grant that, that Chaffey County got last year or two years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it, even though it's EPA, it is still in effect, it is still available.
What do you mean eats food?
Um, so it's anaerobic, it, it digests the food and turns it into methane
Oh.
to burn as a source of heat for the building.
So when someone brings a bag of trash, and how do you separate the food?
Uh, they would have to separate it if they come in, you know, with your food waste.
Oh.
Um, compostable stuff.
Restaurants would probably be good partners to that.
Yeah, that would, and that's what we're hoping, even, you know, households, if we can keep it clean and separate.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, that's one of the biggest problems with recycling right now, is the drop-off sites, we can't keep clean enough
Yeah.
to run through what we have to do, cuz we have to touch every bit of that to go into the recycling bin.
Yeah.
And it's pretty much handpicking a lot of it.
Yeah.
The new one that we're looking for is more like a, a single source. So you can push it into a conveyor belt and it sorts itself, kind of?
Those are so cool, I love watching those.
So that, that's, yeah, I, I've visited quite a few of those in Denver, and it's, it's awesome to watch.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, it takes the steel here, it takes wood and cans here. Paper, it blows off the thing, so it puts it into something.
Yeah, it's like.
It's really cool to watch.
It is cool.
What's, how much time do we have to come up with three million?
Um, that is a good question, because, you know, we're running out of room here, and we do not wanna have to close our landfill. And that would be the worst thing for Lake County.
Yeah.
Our woods would get trashed. Because, well, nothing like that, we would have to truck it out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the next landfill is forty miles away if they accept our trash.
Yeah. Maybe having their own problem.
Um, I know Grabby has to do that right now, because their landfill slid off the hillside.
What?
It wasn't stable and it, it slid, and so they shut them down.
Trash the land.
What?
Um, so they have to haul up there, and it's a twenty-four hour trip, trip, just going back and forth to haul the dump.
Wow.
So what's our time?
Um, I would say we need to, to be at least doing this one in the, in the next three years.
Yeah.
The amount of trash that we're taking in the landfill right now is crazy.
Yeah.
Um, we have to pay the state to be able to take it, and those fees have gone up this year at least three times. Um, what we've been paying for them.
Wait, what are we paying the state for?
We pay a solid waste users' fee. So every bit of trash that we take in, that we charge for, we get to pay the state for that, too.
We get to pay Colorado for the trash that we're taking out.
The trash that we're taking in, and that's how they fund themselves.
What percentage is that roughly, do you know? Like, how much, how much do they take for us to?
I mean, I think, like, this last month, it was, um, almost six thousand dollars.
Okay.
Um, and that's like seventeen cents a cubic yard.
Okay, alright.
But that's how much we've increased, you know, used to be like twelve hun- twelve hundred dollars, now it's six thousand dollars. That's how much we've increased taking trash in.
How do we get the revenue at the dump to kinda?
Can we feel?
Got that, you know?
Feeling?
It's in the works.
Well, how do we get to feel a little less like, every time I go up there, I'm like, I can't believe how much less I pay to dump here than I do, say, at a, a, a GFL dump site in Michigan, or something like that, you know?
According to everybody in the state, we're the highest price. But I can, I don't believe that.
I don't believe that either.
Cuz every time I go to raise the prices, which is hard to do every five years, which we had a resolution a couple of years ago that the Commissioners approved, to raise it January first every year, but I can't find the signed copy of that right now.
Dang. We can redo it?
Yeah, we probably should, I mean, it's just like keeping, we gotta at least keep up with inflation. This is like a service that I, I don't feel like, you know, it, it needs improvements, it needs work. I feel like, every time I take trash to our dump, I'm always amazed at how it seems I'm expecting to pay a lot more than I do every time I'm there. Not to mention, given our current situation of a, the clock is ticking. Um, I really wonder how much we could look at out of area, trash coming in?
Yeah, I mean, and I've kind of enforced that this last year, everybody that comes to the landfill, if you don't have a local license plate, or that we know that you're from Ludville, they do check to see if you have property in Ludville, if you got an out-of-state plate coming up there. Like for second home?
They check driver's licenses.
I never have my driver's license checked, am I just that recognizable?
Maybe.
Maybe.
But they do, you know, if, if it's not under driver's license, at least a bill that says, you know, you own property in Ludville.
Okay. See, I feel like that, I'm sorry.
And that differentiates between someone doing remodel in Summit where it's really expensive to dump trash, and obviously you can drive it over here.
I'm sure they have.
Especially from copper.
Those are the people I'd really like to double, shovel the rates.
Yeah, I mean, we've already got that for out-of-county stuff, but we can prove they're coming out of county.
Yeah.
I thought about doing that with trash trucks coming from Salida or Chaffey County, to see if they're hauling trash up here when they come up to pick up trash.
Yeah.
To see if, you know, they go to the landfill first thing when they get here.
How would we not know if they're doing that?
I tried, I tried to see if the sheriff could pull them over to check their truck, but they said they couldn't without a warrant, so.
But how would we know it's a game if a, if a Chaffey County waste truck is pulling into dump, how would we not know that?
Um, we would have to pull us on the county line into the landfill.
Oh, because we allow, even though they're a business in a different county.
Yeah, they pick up trash in Lake County.
Yeah.
Since they're picking up trash here in Lake County, they're allowed to dump that in our landfill.
Because it's Lake County trash.
Somebody's, uh, mail gets loose, is it legal to go through people's trash?
Once it's in the, in the landfill, it is.
People always dump. People always dump.
Try your stuff, folks.
Has there ever been a discussion with Chaffey about getting together in the future?
That the state wants a region, wants regional landfills, they don't want all these little landfills around. But I would prefer that would be Lake County's landfill, because then we wouldn't have to drive forty miles or haul forty miles.
Yeah, I would prefer that. I would, I, I like, I, I like local landfills opposed to regional landfills for reasons I've discussed with other commissioners about the more prohibitive you make it to take your trash somewhere, the more people are gonna look down the dirt road and.
But Matt's talking about a trash authority, not a trash, not. Landfill authority different from landfill. Like those two, isn't talking about creating major.
He said regional landfills, which I've heard.
Yeah, there's one landfill for the whole San Luis Valley.
Yeah, so that, that's what I was, that's what I was addressing was that, you know, there's other.
I know that CUPG did, um, an investigation a while back and that's why they came up with the new solid waste plan. Statewide. And they did find out regional landfills weren't really good in the city because they could do transfer stations all through the city.
Yeah, geographically closer together.
I mean, that's why Dad's works really good, Denver Rapid Disposal Site. Works really good in Denver, um, cause it takes, you know, all of the metro trash on one side.
But yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't work the same in rural areas.
Yeah, I mean, it's harder to get it here, obviously, uh, winter traveling, going over passes. Something going south would be okay.
Even covered loads of stuff blowing out of the truck while you're driving and.
Well, so we need to start trying to come up with a million dollars a year for the next three years.
Oh, it is only that, if we close the landfill, I think we have one point five million in the closure fund right now. And we already need it to be almost a million dollars to close it.
Let's get to the numbers, let's get the numbers on moving those wells and see if we can get started with that ASAP. I think that sounds like the first step.
Hangups I had on a CUPG meeting was like, where are you gonna move it to? How are you gonna drill it? What are you gonna do it? And it's like, well, we're gonna hopefully start twenty-six. Can we, we do gotta kind of show that we are moving forward with it because they did finally approve it, the whole plan, the EPOP this year. Which going, going with that, we just passed a major inspection out of the landfill with flying colors. It had two things that we needed to look at and it's all recognized.
Strong word.
Nice, good job, Michael.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think if, and if we can start making some moves, moving some chess pieces around and show that, that'll might get us some support from our, our, uh, of the G word.
Yeah, I mean, we've been exploring, like, we've, we've applied for a grant for the scale.
Yeah, so we do have time waiting for a scale to maybe help get better.
That would be sweet.
Yeah, better numbers.
Better charges.
I'm telling you, the price fluctuates, like, you know, if, if, uh, you're really nice to, I don't know, yeah, it seems like, um.
But it's gonna make people not want to bring anything out because they get weight going in and they don't wanna be heavier coming out, cause I'm gonna charge them for the way going out. Wait, what do you mean? Well, when, when they go across the scale and you get weighed. So that's your chair weight going in with the trash. When you come out, you should be lighter. But if people are taking steel and stuff.
Quick question on the, the eight acres, what, like, how many years does that give the county?
Um, it'll give them probably fifteen. So in that timeframe, we would still need to be working on the next section. And that's kinda what we're done, you know, um. All the time that we did, that's why this last section was done. It was supposed to buy us time to get this one all covered, get ready to go. It didn't. But we did get, since this one was full, we did get a notice that the state wouldn't let us expand anymore without it being in line, so that's why we're.
What kinda, what does moving the wells first steps look like? Do we need studies and plans and stuff like that?
No, um, cause we've already done all the environmental stuff. And that's why our vital, our professional services for the landfill are high this year. Because we've had to do this to get through the state stuff. So we can just go out, they've already located where they're gonna drill it or where they need to be. With the state's approval that it will actually read what's needed from the landfill. Because right now there's a, um, it's actually about right here, a water well, a water that comes in that's supposedly across the landfill. We found out that is not the way that water flows across the landfill, flows from here to here. So that's how, that's how they were able to pick it up with that well that sits in there. Um, and we were not able to pick it up down valley on our well that we have down here. So they're saying that we do have some volatile organic compounds coming in that water there. But we don't have it, we, we thought it was down valley, but it's coming, water flows down towards the airport now. So. That's where we're at. That's why we have to move it this side of the landfill instead of down here. But we already have one down here that we believe to need to check if we're required by the state to monitor down.
Why I find this such a fascinating subject.
No, um, but that's why, that's why they're forcing us to do, um, the land landfill stuff. There, there are some POCs that they found, they're not at a, a level right now where we have to do anything. But we don't wanna get them at that level either, because it'll clean it, those will clean themselves out.
Yeah, it should drop as long as any additions are lined.
We do have some PFASs coming off the landfill, but there's nothing we can do about it. That's.
Yes, it is.
Um, but I do have to check on, on the water, the groundwater that runs off, the stormwater that runs off. I have to check for PFAS as well.
How deep are those wells?
Um, this one here, which the state just put in a few years ago and they paid to put that one in, um, I think it's two hundred and fifty feet.
Oh, wow.
And the art down here is about three hundred feet.
Can we get the state to pay for the moving new ones?
I mean, the state has helped us a lot by doing the actual wells. They did pay for that. I know, see, in some of the CCI meetings I went to, uh, for the, before the conference, we met with CUPG. A lot of landfills, that's why the, the grants for closing landfills came about. Because Alamosa County kind of did a boo boo. They went back to doing stuff off the top of a closed landfill, which basically reopened the landfill. And they didn't read all the requirements of the current, current requirements of the landfill.
So they got the money and doing their first to do with that.
Well, they, they closed the landfill, it was closed for several years, but they went back and were shredding stuff for doing something on top of the landfill without approval. So the state came down on them. Because they, they weren't a permitted landfill anymore. But there is one other landfill in Lake County too, closed that the county owns with the federal government owns it now.
Where is it?
Down at Twin Lakes. South trailhead to Albert, you know, when you go up on the flats just off of the paved road. There's a nice really flat place in the trees. That's all landfill. That was the Twin Lakes landfill.
When did it close?
In the early seventies. It's been closed that long ago.
Now the federal government owns it cause it's on federal land.
Forest Service will do it.
Interesting.
It would be really interesting to see what our biggest, what metrics are on like, what's the biggest cubic yard suck in the landfill? Is it like? People not opening the caps on plastic bottles and there's all those air pockets in there or is it like, you know?
I mean, our compacters, compacters, they're really good. Pretty good confection on it. Unless your mattress is in it, that's why we're trying to recycle mattresses now. Because believe it or not, you can compact over a mattress ten ba- ten times and it'll still work itself to the surface. You can put different layers of trash on it and it'll still work itself to the surface just because it extends it.
That's tired of the worst things to try to cover in the landfill.
Wait a second, that's wild.
How does it migrate? Styrofoam in a bucket of sand and shake it until it all.
Oh my gosh, that's so interesting.
Operating the landfill is really interesting. All the laws that go with it are a nightmare too.
So how are we gonna address this? Is it addressed at all in this year's budget from next year?
It is not. This is why we wanna start to get that capital plan together, so things like this, we can say, hey, this is how much we know we need to allocate to them. It's also why I really appreciate yesterday's conversation. Because we have to say no to some of the things that are not things we actually need to be doing because these are things we have to be doing and services we, we really should be providing for our community. And so I, I, I think it gives us a great perspective to say, hey, what do we need to be doing in the future? This kind of brings me back to, well, helps me with the conversation about our reserves. You said something yesterday, um, we, we want to confirm what our reserves are. We, we are working with the treasurer's office and, and our auditor, because we've been two audits behind. For really, we've done two audits simultaneously, which is exciting times. Um, but we just wanna confirm that what we have is really accurate, so we can start to make decisions with any extra money we have in the general fund. So some of our money that we hold is committed to other things like the landfill closure. We can't touch that money to go do a landfill. But we do think we've got some reserves, we really want to dial that in, so we can start to make good plans and five-year plans. Not crisis level plans. And so you said something yesterday that I, it made me feel like you don't under, that you're, well, that we don't know for sure what our reserves are. I mean, I think the last commissioners thought we had reserves, we do have some. But because we're two audits behind, we can't say definitively what those reserves were, cause our books weren't closed. So I, that is what I'm working on right now, is getting that number in hand from our last audit. And working with Pater to say, this is exactly what we have extra, here's how much we have to hold for taper. Here's how much we have to hold to operate for a few months should things go upside down. And here's anything above that that we need to be making these kinds of plans with.
So if I said anything incorrect, I apologize. It's just the, the sense of like what, how many things we have said no to already this year, like, no, we can't do this. We gotta come way back on this. It makes me feel like previously there wasn't a very good grasp on things and the lines were blurred.
Was, because the numbers they were working with last year were with two years of books unclosed. And two audits, well, an audit and a, a audit not done a year late. And also a full year of books not closed. You can't say what you spent or didn't spend, how you did or didn't do. To know that you can commit to different projects and that's what we are cleaning up and getting that really dialed, so we can start to make those plans. A lot of the things we've said no to are because we want to make sure our budget is balanced for the year we're in. Because we will have fund balances that we can commit to other things, but we actually need to know with real assurance what we're working with. Not just shooting from the hip with two audits, not done, which is not. Best practice? The best practice. Um, I get it, we lost a lot of staff, there's a lot of turnover, things change, right? But we wanna really be working from a place of being fiscally responsible, having a five-year plan. Knowing all of the deferred maintenance, so we can have a list of like, hey, we'll do this first, we'll work on the second, or we'll put a hundred thousand towards this, or, you know, eighty thousand towards project fee, because we know we have eight years for it, but we've just never had that level of planning. So we are really saying, hey, we're gonna hold ourselves to be fiscally responsible and work within the revenues we think we'll bring in and expenses that'll go out. And then we need to be actual planners and when you're that far behind. You need to pump the brakes and know where you're at, so you're making decisions from the place of knowing and planning. Not just floating out in space somewhere and that's really what we're doing.
Yeah, we're pumping the brakes and I can't imagine what the previous boards were handed.
Oh my god, I don't know.
They, they, they left things better than.
The night at them, for sure.
So I'm grateful for, you know, where they got us so that we're even able to identify, okay, here's what we need to work on, here's what we need to work on. You know, so I'm not trying to throw previous ones under the bus.
I think we've slowly seen an evolution of like, just getting things dialed and having a good plan. And, and, and not a crisis level plan, like an actual plan, because we know what we're working with, we know what's coming up, we have five-year projections and projections change, you know, you don't know that COVID's gonna hit. Or whatever happens, you know, but we have like a trajectory to say, hey, we know that things will look about like this in five years, so we can start to make shifts. As we see how we're tracking against what we thought would happen.
Yeah, I, you guys have noticed, I like to approach things maybe like we're in crisis level budget mode. Because that gets results a little bit quicker than being like, well, it could be bad. Instead of like, we really need to get this figured out.
Well, and also at the federal level, we've had grants stripped away from us that we planned on. We've had funding sources that would go to DHS that are now being taken away and we know we're gonna be taking away more in the future. We are in a weird position, we're in a weird time, that's not really happened in years past. So we are making the right fiscal call because we can't predict the entire future, but it's looking hard. And stopping and doing the right things now and taking the time to have that plan. So we're not having to respond in a crisis is why we are saying, hey, we're pumping the brakes for a minute, we're getting our ducks in a row. And we're making sure we have a plan so that we can actually pivot if something changes and makes up, you know, more challenging in the future. You can't do that if you don't know where you're at, what you're working with, you know, so we're doing the right thing and saying, hey, we're, we're stopping right now. Because we wanna be able to, to weather what looks like it's gonna be tough the next few years. In terms of what the state and the Fed will be passing down with cuts.
Can't put the right wax on your skis if you don't know what the conditions are gonna be.
Exactly. I feel like I should send you my presentations ahead of time and you should just like insert. All right, are you, do you have anything else you wanna add? And we're gonna keep exploring grants. If we find a grant to do a landfill. We will take it. We hope we find one, we just don't.
Thank you, Michael.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate you.
Okay. So as we've been approaching the, the budget and our capital, uh, projects. Um, thi- things that we've been thinking about are safety, legal and regulatory needs, those are things like courthouse. Um, maintaining existing assets, if there's a hole in the roof, we can't just let it ride. Uh, e- even if we have to patch it till we have a better plan. Uh, H Back, our fleet, we are really trying to do some work at diving into the fleet and making sure we understand ins and outs of you know, what's coming in, what's going out, when we need to replace it, if something's not used as much, do we wait? You know, just asking ourselves, getting real data to inform our decisions instead of feeling it out. Um, leveraging outside funding, so when we find grants, uh, we really try to match that. We're, uh, have the external dollars on the table. Um, so we went through every one of our grants this year that has a match and we budgeted that match. Aligning with board priorities, you know, done a lot with housing at ten-two, that's one of the things we had to, we had to work in, is, you know, ensuring those homes to leave, move, move out from under our purview. County facilities, uh, we're doing the work to know the delayed maintenance on each of those facilities, what we have, what we don't have, what we should focus. So we can build a plan for what you guys wanna focus on or not. Um, economic development, natural resources, et cetera. Um, ability to defer without major risk, um, because we're being really conservative in this time of spending. We're looking at projects that can reasonably wait and trying to plan for those later. As we look at just a capital asset management plan and, and not just buildings, but looking at our rec assets, et cetera. Um, so this is kind of how we prioritize, um, really anything that wasn't that wasn't really like, hey, this is a, this year we didn't put in capital request. We've really said, hey, we really need to analyze all of our assets collectively and we're doing that work right now. Trying to get that assessment done so we know, hey, this is what we have, don't have what it needs, what it doesn't need. Should we hold on to it? Should we take those dollars and invest somewhere else? So we're working on that. But you guys, um, have the opportunity to say, hey, we wanna put more more money towards this or not. If you told me you need to go cut money somewhere, I'm gonna do it. We'll figure this out. But I did wanna at least get these, I would suggest we wait till twenty six to start planning for the twenty seven budget with actual numbers in hand that we feel confident in. Um, and then really start to have that five-year plan is what I am asking you guys for. Okay. Um, so when we do capital requests, we're looking for board direction from you guys. Um, to confirm that that current list feels good. Identify anything that you guys maybe want added to that list that you know offhand. Uh, anything you want us to reduce or remove. Uh, I didn't put three million dollar landfill into the budget. I didn't have room to. Uh, so I don't know that I can remove it, but um, I do wanna I do want us to be planning for it and then um, if we're deferring, we wanna start to work on that actual five-year plan for what does that look like to get it done. Um, if we wanna use reserves versus staying within our current discretionary estimates, I think we really need to get our audit fully done, really analyze our reserves, but I do think we wanna have some conversations about what is it, what will that look like?
Yeah.
Um, and then any specific board priorities you guys want us to also look at or if you wanna wait through the capital plan, that's that's kind of the direction we wanna look at from you guys.
I personally would rather wait until the capital asset management plan so that we understand the breadth of our needed investment and then from there can prioritize. I fully trust that people have a handle on what is most critical for now until we actually get all the information and to collate. So I'm fine. I'm fine with that.
All right.
Ooh.
Nice transition.
Okay, so we've done quarter four memos in the past and we've decided we don't love that format. But what we do love is a great dashboard. So let's talk about our new uh dashboard for Q four memos. Um, let's see here, trying to figure out the best way to actually to do this. Okay. Um, so you guys will receive a link so you can be clicking through this. We can click on our administration tab. All right, and it shows you Q one, actual expenses, budgeted expenses, Q two, where we're at, and this blue line is kind of the average of of, you know, what we expected to see. We know that we don't just pay things consistently every month. Some things we pay um upfront. Uh, some things we we pay just as they come up. Uh, as we get a better handle on our cash flow, because we have our books closed every single month and we can look at them, we can start to say, oh, we know that most of our revenues come into the treasurer's office in quarter two. There are probably a lot of bigger expenses that maybe aren't due at the beginning of the year or some expenses that are currently due at the beginning of the year that we could talk with the vendor and say, hey, could you move this to a quarter two expense? And really start to match dollars going out the door, dollars coming in the door and have a little bit better of a cash flow. Um, as we really are tracking every year, hey, quarter one, two, three, four, we know this is what's coming in. This is what we know what's going out the door. Um, so I'm not gonna walk through this whole thing with you because it's really not about the budget. It's about the updates of where we're at.
Yeah.
Um, but this dashboard is for you guys. You can look through any department you wanna look at. You can, um, click on the ambulance and health and human services. They get a portion of our mill. Um, and then you can, you know, reset these and kind of go, um, kind of go back through it and just kind of click on, you know, whatever.
Is Gatsby our finance department? How's Gatsby different from our finance?
Uh, Gatsby. Are you looking at that on there?
Yeah, it's in the middle.
Thank you. Uh, Gatsby, those are audit adjustments.
Those are, okay.
Yeah. And they're a little different. They don't really necessarily impact our our dollars in or out.
Yeah.
They're adjustments that the auditor sends to us every year.
Right. Interesting.
So I'm gonna let you guys work through this. This is, I think, a little more informative than you guys getting a static sheet that just says quarter one, two, three, four, here's what we spent. And so what they've been before is they've just been a table with static numbers in there and it rolled all of the expenses into like three buckets that were very confusing to staff because they didn't realize, hey, when you look at pro services, there's actually several different types of items in there. Or when you look at transfers, that's transfers from the general fund to another fund or from, um, you know, uh, well, mainly from the general fund to another fund. Like the ambulance, all of the dollars for the mills, the ambulance come in to the general fund to Patrick and then they get put towards the ambulance fund and we pay the ambulance one big check in the year.
Yeah.
Um, I think this is just a much better way to look at, hey, here's about what we thought we'd do. Here are revenues, here are expenses, here's what we budgeted and click through. Um, I'd love to give you guys some time to look through this and if we wanna schedule a time for you guys to kind, like, if you wanna look through it and send me questions, maybe we'll schedule another time if you wanna come back and ask even more detailed questions or I'll sit down with all of you one-on-one. I feel like this, I I and I love your your feedback. If if you like the static charts or the static one-pager, we can definitely go back to doing that, but I I really like that you guys can be going through here and come up with the detailed questions that you have.
I think it's wonderful. Thank you. Um, just from my own understanding, this is great budget conversations than Q four, three.
So normally in Q four, we look back at Q three because it's closed. This is actually up to now. So you can kind of see what we've started to do in quarter four and where we think we will in end for the year.
To right now.
And that's really important. Uh, Will did a projection on here. Um, and he, I wanna close. Well.
How's this going under?
So he actually has uh, in in the next two slides, I'm gonna do it ahead of myself.
Okay.
He actually talks about how he calculated the projection.
Okay.
And we'll use that projection to say, hey, this is where we think we're gonna end the year.
Yeah.
Uh, based on the expenses we have in each department.
Yeah.
We've got a little granular and said, hey, we have a hundred and thirty-four days left in the year. Um, and this is what we think we will do based on the average dollar spend we've done per day for the year. So, um, he actually has a third page in here that's a key. Might be the next one. But there's a map and it walks you through how to use it and gives you notes on
Cool.
on how to use this tool.
Cool. Wait, my question though is actually not about budgets. When do we get the reports from the departments?
This is.
Not 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 budget.
Oh.
Like what people are working on, what frustrations they're having, what they're hoping for. I know we did some of that with the like goal setting. But I'm just wondering, we used to get that like every month and when do we?
The county managers report.
Yes.
I can do another one. I don't know when the next one's scheduled. Oh, don't check this out, Drew.
It'd be awesome to, um, yeah, these are really interesting and it'd be awesome to bring those back on board to see like the content of what people are doing and what it costs to do it. That'd be awesome.
Yes, I'll get those updates back.
After the budget.
Missed one last one.
After the budget. Okay, cool. Map, map time.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Finance.
Okay.
Finance, annual, annual budget.
Yeah. So guys, this is, and I wanted to show this for a couple of reasons. This is actually the twenty twenty-six prelim. Uh, they made an error in the table with the title and they were gonna frantically try to fix it this morning and I said, it's okay. I can communicate that.
Yeah, it's fine.
We could change the number in our head.
Yeah, we can, yeah. Lock out the little five.
Will is sick and stayed here forever getting this set up because he wanted to be perfect and I was not gonna this morning be like, I know you're still sick. Will, you changed that.
I can actually just say, Josh just confirmed the link I sent you. Will actually did have to delay it. It does say twenty twenty-six.
Oh. Of course he did.
I didn't put a long link. That's correct.
Um, okay, so this chart, uh, this chart I really like because it shows a couple of different things. Uh, if you hover over each of these areas, which I don't know why my mind's not popping yet, but yours should. It's really hard to do looking at a different screen than on mine. Um, so when we look at the blue ones, I can't see the key on that. Oh, there it is, full-time. So this is Pro and Goal. Um, eight full-time people. You see we have a lot of part-time people. You see we have a lot of seasonal people. This is the biggest area. So even though their chart's really tall here, that's numbers of humans, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's.
This is the actual expense, uh, based on what they've historically staffed. We didn't give them any extra humans, but we know that is insane and we will not be doing that. This is why we are looking at not even reorganizing the department. We're saying, hey, we need to look at whom we have that's full-time. We need to ask ourselves, how can we utilize them more fully across the department, no matter what programming or if you're part of goal or if you're part of frac? We need to be asking ourselves, can we be supporting one another a little bit more in our programming with our full-time humans? Where do we really need part-time humans? I think seasonal people make a lot of sense, but it's also like, if this is what we're doing, maybe we just need two more full-time people. So what we've been doing with RAC and GOAL is sitting down and having each person present their programming. When are you busy? When are you slow? What all are you doing? When does it make sense, uh, for you not to come in at eight AM if you have programming till ten PM? Maybe you just come in at noon and do a little bit of hours and then really work on really work on just maybe we need to dial some things in. And we know we do. Um.
There's some low hanging fruit there.
Yes, absolutely.
Is sea- I'm guessing seasonal is rock is rock.
It's a lot of things. Like, we don't, we don't have someone working on ice rink all year long. Like, we just bring in a seasonal person who's you know, the ice maintenance human.
What's the difference between seasonal and and part-time?
Part-time are, uh, people who just work a few hours a week, but it's year-round.
Hmm.
Versus like some people only come on for winter programming. Some people only come on for summer programming. Um, and so we're really trying to say, hey, we need to really think about and analyze, um, and analyze like what are we doing and be more intelligent with our staffing. Not about cutting the cool things we offer, just saying, hey, guys, this is where we're at. Maybe we just need two full-time people or to have a little bit different of a plan.
But wouldn't. Wouldn't that in a sense in certain instances cost us more?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, that.
Yeah, what is, yeah, just.
There's benefits and.
Query, like what is the harm of having this many staff? Not, I'm not questioning it.
I don't care about the numbers. I care about the one point eight two million dollars right there.
Yeah. But it's harder to manage people who are only here for
Yeah.
um, and they're probably not.
I'm really, I'm just really curious because if it's like, if it's a volleyball ref who really knows what they're doing and they are the volleyball ref year-round, but they only work twice a week.
Sure.
That's not the thing you're cutting. But like, I'm really, I'm just curious to see if those numbers, how those numbers are gonna shift. I'm just curious.
I think we just need to have a plan and that's what's lacking is we don't always have a plan. We're just like, oh, my God, it's busy. We need eighteen people. And it's like, actually, I don't know. Do we need eighteen or do we just need to say somebody who's already here, maybe you don't come in at eight. Maybe maybe you come in at noon and you start work at noon and you do a couple of hours of admin work.
Yeah.
And then you cover some programming. And then if you really do need some part-time refs, et cetera, let's talk about what that looks like and start to come from a place of planning.
Yeah.
Not just being in the moment and responding. And I get it. Sometimes we have more or less people sign up for an activity. We're still gonna have seasonal people. We're still gonna have part-time people.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Business is really starting to like the rest.
And there's two sides, you know, for every volleyball coach, we give a little bit of part-time pay to who really knows what they're doing. There's probably someone who's like, nobody knows anything about this. Well, just paid Fred to do this who has no idea what he's doing, but we're gonna give him money to do something.
No, a hundred percent. Absolutely. Don't worry. I've also seen those volleyball refs, yeah.
I'm not singling out volleyball. I'm just.
I am. Don't worry.
Because we've been in in budget season, I haven't gotten to join every one of, we've been meeting weekly um, to like walk through people's programming. What do you do? What does that look like? What does it cost? How many people do you serve?
Yeah.
Does this program make sense? Would it be better to say, hey, these two actually make more sense? But we've never really analyzed any of our programs in that fashion before. And so I'm just really excited to say, hey, let's be intentional. Let's have a plan. We can be nimble, but we also, I think with that in absence of a plan, sometimes you don't use your dollars as wisely as you could. And that's really why we're like, hey, let's talk about everybody's program. What does that look like? What do you do? How many people do you need? How long does that take you? What resources do you use? Are you communicating with the school? Who are the partners that you work with in this?
Totally.
Um.
Yeah, that ninety part and seasonal people um, is the most cost-effective gap through maintenance.
Great.
A level, then cool, but I think, yeah, we, it'll be great to take a deeper look.
Yeah, but we don't know.
Yeah, totally.
Yeah.
Who are the seasonal people in HR?
That's what I was wondering.
Some of their interns.
Oh, cool.
I saw that last night and I was like, whoa, what is going on there? But they they bring in interns that roll through throughout the year. So it's like, that makes no sense to me. Will and I had that discussion on my drive.
And I'm assuming under lodging taxes, those seasonal folks are our business center staff?
Mm-hmm.
Cool.
And lodging taxes separate, so some of the tourism staff are covered under that lodging tax we collect. And we track them in that area as opposed to tourism and economic development.
Yes, that makes sense.
Um, so you guys can run through this and I'll work through every single thing, but I think this is really nice to just, you know, some of these are less than tens of the little, they would be tiny, but if you hover over them, it'll pop up for you. I don't know if my mind's being weird, but.
Um.
Okay.
Three minutes.
But you can filter down to like different levels, like you can click admin, pick the person's area that you wanna look at, but
Wow.
This is what we are looking at for next year. I hope to really, really analyze every department in the way that we're taking a really hard look at our our recreation staffing. Main mainly because that involves a lot of humans and it's really nuanced. I don't think we've ever looked at it. But like for finance, um, Will moved to the finance director. We didn't replace the deputy finance director. Um, we're really trying to ask ourselves, you know, what do what do we wanna do there? Like, do we need extra bandwidth there? And if we do, is that a deputy or is that just another person who does accounting work?
Yeah.
So they've got room to add another human because Will and I are hanging in there. Um, but also we wanna like explore what does this look like if we're not doing two audits at once before we fill that type of a position or a different type of position. And we've tried starting to do that across all of our departments, like where can we be a little more intentional to say, hmm, i- if we added a better IT system, is this person who, this is just an example, this is not talking about an actual human that I know. Like, is someone who's filing papers, is that the best use of their time? If it's just automated and we have better systems, like a drive that's organized and we're not printing paper out.
Yeah.
So I think there's just some places where we're asking ourselves, could we improve our process? So that human that is filing papers actually could be doing a different higher level task and have the opportunity to do some training, grow with us. And really just start to to improve how we serve people. And how it can sometimes feel clunky to work through getting something done or
Yeah.
you know, with the county. And we really wanna get, we're still government. We're always gonna move at the speed of government. It's just how it is, but we really wanna make the experience a little easier for people when they have to to utilize services with us.
I love it.
So this is for you all.
I have a granular question.
Yeah.
Are there gonna be two people in the water and natural resources together?
Yeah, there is. Yeah, there is.
Cool.
I budgeted for that natural resource, cause we, our statute, they're actually supposed to cover that piece. Uh.
Great.
So we made sure we've really kept that there, it's budgeted for, but we likely won't, we will not be filling that until we have a really great plan.
Yeah.
We don't just wanna like chunk someone in the seat without a real like, hey, this is actually what needs to happen, here's what you will be doing.
Yeah.
And making sure that we really have a solid plan. I think we've sometimes had seats that needed to be filled, so we threw someone in it and said, figure out your job.
Yep.
And that's, not that we don't want people to have some hot time and be able to figure out what works in the space they're in, but we wanna be really clear about outcomes. Before we just chuck someone in the seat and be like, run.
So in the, in the twenty twenty six budget?
Yes.
Is that full salary for the whole year budgeted in or just half of it?
We went ahead and did the full, knowing we could look for that person in the second month. Some of the positions, uh, he worked with us a lot and said, hey. My positions are really expensive.
Yeah.
I know I might not fill them till mid-year.
Yeah.
Let's budget for a mid-year and we appreciate so much that he worked with us on that. You can see he doesn't have just an astronomical number of humans, but the cost to get qualified people in. And, and also like, I'm not asking the rest of my staff to show up and risk their lives. Like, you know, we, we do finance work, Will and I, or I'm doing this job, I'm not like showing up for the sort of situation. He's, staff is showing up for, right? What they are paid to retain them looks a lot different than for us. So like, public safety is generally pretty expensive and we do analyze throughout the year, or we haven't, but we're gonna try to be looking at, okay. How many sat empty for how long and start to get a run rate, you know? It's hard to just say, I don't, to budget for when you think you'll fill it because we.
Yeah.
Don't know how long it takes us to fill a position, we don't know how long they sit out there. We don't know how fast we turn them over because we've never collected data on it, but Ashley and I are really trying to start to capture that. But I like having this, so you guys can click through it, um, understand where we're at within departments. Oh, sorry. Guys, this work in two different screens is really crushing me. Okay, here's the map, so when you are not with me and you're like, what the heck, what did she say? All of this kinda tells you how we developed our numbers for the projections, the personnel tab kinda walks you through it, you can jog through these. What's really cool is we've never had positional budgeting set up before where we actually really account for everybody's base salary. Um, incorrectly, we can say, hey, we want a model, what will happen if our goal is two percent, eight percent, one percent? Those are things we've never actually had the ability to like really do quickly with the click of a, of a couple of buttons and Tyler, because we. We've actually had positional budgeting, we paid for it, the whole time we've had Tyler. At some point, Will and I, when I came on, we reached out to Tyler and we said, we want a list of everything we paid for and a list of everything that's turned on. And when we went through it, one of the things that wasn't turned on was positional budgeting. And so we worked with them for several weeks to get them to turn it on, to work through the kinks and get it rolling for us, so we can actually have the numbers. Um, so this is for you guys to help you out. Okay. So let's start to talk about budget. That projection, that second one is for the, it's the twenty twenty six staffing. Alright, so this is back to what we looked at, um, in our town hall. Um, it has not been updated with the few exciting items that have come up because Will and I simply haven't had time to update this yet. But we are gonna sit down because we've gotta start making some cuts. Um, so when we originally presented the, um, prelim, we were about a hundred and twenty six K-ish.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, still left to cut. Things that have come up in that time are, um, are, are cost for our workers comp.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we've made a couple of requests back to them on our workers comp quote. So our workers comp quote was about a hundred thousand higher, uh, than it has been in the past because, I don't know what the heck numbers we've reported in the past, but they just seem very low. Um, but we also are gonna analyze them, we're rerunning the numbers, um, just to make sure we got the, the right am, right amounts to them, I just wanna back check it.
Mm-hmm.
And then we also, uh, have reached out and said, hey, if this is where it's at, could, could we ask you guys if we raise our deductible, could it lower our cost? Um, if we. Well, that's one of the biggest things we asked for and I think we asked a few other questions, yeah. Could we increase our deductible or share in the claim cost to reduce our premium? Um, Stuart has offered to become a Colorado certified premium cost containment holder. Uh, he has a really strong insurance background, he has a license, so it's great, in Colorado. So he has asked if I do this training in twenty twenty six, could, could, if I hold that, normally you get a ten percent savings. So he is gonna see about doing that for twenty seven, I know that doesn't happen for us, help us this year, but we're just trying to really outthink problems before it goes up again the next year.
Yeah.
Um, and then he asked for them to really like break, break down what constitutes the payroll, what constitutes what we've been doing in the past. And so we're really analyzing that, um, but, but we are gonna have to increase the amount until we get those answers back.
Yeah.
To cover the bill we've been sent.
What was our total bill?
It ended up being, I think, I can't remember off the top of my head.
Just general?
Seven million dollars? No, 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 no. I think it was one ninety, I'm actually really pretty good at bringing numbers up off of my, out of the back of my brain.
Okay, cool. Okay.
Uh, I think it was like, gee, it was like one, a hundred and ninety six thousand? Probably closer to one ninety seven, cause there was, it was like one ninety six something.
That's more than doubled then, it had increased by a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, it increased like a hundred and two percent, I think is what we saw.
Just for workers comp.
Yeah. So, uh, that's exciting, but we don't get to opt out of workers comp. But we are, we're exploring every option we can to say, hey, could we reduce that? And B, can we really start to get some safety protocols in place?
Yeah.
So our loss ratios are going down.
Yeah.
Um.
This is all from like injuries on.
This is why we have A R. Which is new for us.
It is new for us. Well, we saw that great report.
Yeah, our loss ratios are going down, we are, we are getting it together.
Well, as soon as we move out of that one year, it'll go, it'll be great. And then last year, not great, so we have five more years, but.
It's okay, we're, we're gonna do all the things we can to try to drop it, so that's, that has increased, uh, our, our amount. And then we also had, um. Forty thousand-ish dollars estimated to try to, the housing intend to.
Mm-hmm.
No one understood that, um, well, I don't know how this was missed, but it was. When you have homes and the foundation is set, you own the property, you know, in the foundation. The, um, Oakwood Homes, it owns the box, right? But once the box is set and improved, the improved box on your property has to be covered until it is sold to somebody. And they, the in, we didn't have a plan for insuring those until it goes to the seller, or the buyer, excuse me, and then it becomes theirs.
Yeah.
And so we reached out to CTSI, they get a quote, and I, having actually done this before, which is weird. Uh, having had to insure homes in five plexes that have been unrolled off, we switched it out. Uh, I've worked with, um, State Farm before. We're gonna reach out to them and say, hey, what does that look like? Because they're local and we'll talk to a few other local people, so we're making sure we follow our procurement policy. But you can actually try to roll one on as it's set and roll one off. And so we're gonna talk about the timeline of doing that to see if we can't try to reduce the full amount and sure to keep that number low. Um, but we're gonna try to get creative, but that's the initial quote.
It's when the box touches the concrete?
Once we start to improve it, it's a little different than just insuring a box.
Can we put like some shins on there and pull them out when it's time to, just keep it like a half inch off the surface?
And.
Andy, that is brilliant.
Yes.
It's not touching, uh, airbags, I don't know.
So there, there is three hundred and thirty seven, seven nine seven. So three hundred and thirty seven thousand, almost three thirty, eight thousand dollars left, they've gotta go now.
Okay.
Fine, to cut. Um, we do wanna do that pretty quickly, cause we wanna button this thing up.
Yeah.
And, and we get it, this is a projection, a budget is your best guess about what will happen in the future, what the projects do you think are coming up? Et cetera, we know, that's why supplementals happen and amendments can happen, things change. Um, we do have a couple of ideas, um, I did, I, I did put a hundred in. Twenty thousand? One twenty five in the budget, I have to double check the number for our community contributions, I'm gonna do my best to protect those. Um, but some other things that we could talk about, um, we've been looking at rebuilding an excavator for a hundred thousand dollars for Michael. Um, we could hold off a year or two. Um, other creative ideas we've had are to share the tractor with the landfill. Um, we normally renew our dump parks every year, um, so we've maybe thought we reduce the number of them that, that we renew. Um. We've looked at selling some of our old equipment, I can't count that as a revenue. Until I know that I can get that done, but we're trying to get that done this year.
Okay.
Um, we're looking at it right now and trying to figure out what could that look like?
Is there stuff we were on the hook for that we can? Say, or perhaps consider us not doing that maybe? Certain land acquisitions, have those been factored in yet or?
So, in this current, in this current budget year, we are looking at, hey, where are we gonna shake out, it's why we project.
What are you saying?
You know, in general, hypothetical.
I really need to get some reports back from the treasurer's office for October, so I can close the month of October. Um, and then as soon as, so what happens is you hit the end of the month, thirty first, thirtieth, and then the next day, your bank statement is available. The way government finance works is the treasurer reconciles to the books, the, the, to the bank. It says that whatever happened on the bank account happened on our accounting books and they have to go through every transaction and say. And then once their books are closed, they go to finance and we reconcile to their closed books. So that's why that timing of getting them closed and getting reports is really important. You know, we are the most caught up, we have been in a very long time, the fact that we are looking at getting their reports to close October instead of the whole twelve months.
Yeah.
Is a, a new moment. Um, so that's where we're really trying to streamline, getting that information. As soon as we've got October done and we are a little closer to the end of November, you know, expenses roll in before we get revenues on the finance side. So our expenses, we know what they essentially are. What's hard is getting the revenues from the treasurer, we don't get those till he sends us the report, cause that's not how Colorado finances it up. So we are getting those numbers as fast as possible, I really need October because I can project November and December with finance. Um, so as soon as we get that October report and get it closed, we will try to get those projections, we'll come to you guys with the end of year supplemental. We'll say, hey, we projected this much more expenses for the end of this year, I'll do this before the thirty first. We'll say, here's what we think we will have left for the year, or where we think we'll shake out, we need to make sure none of our funds have spent more than they have. Uh, they shouldn't have, that's why it's really important to get those monthly reports, so you can catch it before you're gonna be there. Um, and say, hey, here's where we're gonna shake out, here's what we have left. Uh, do we wanna roll anything over to next year project wise? Um, did we not do something we thought we would do, like build a coroner's facility?
Yeah.
Um, and then we can do those la, those last supplementals to say, okay, can we move anything over to next year? That's why getting those reports timely is, is really important for us and, and we've come leaps and bounds from where that was happening. So we will come to you guys and say, okay. It does, we can adopt budget for twenty six, but we can do those last supplementals to, to move things over as we need to. We'll also have our audited numbers fully back, I mean, we're gonna do projected fund balances for our final budget. We don't really love using projected ones, we've been working so hard to get this, our, our audit papers have been with the auditor for twenty four since, uh, end of July. We've had a few snags and things that happened before, most of us even worked here, and we're trying to get those really cleaned up. So that ideally next year, because our books are closed, we will be at the point where we're like, hey, your audit papers end in July, the audit's back by August. And we're making all of the decisions they're having to make now.
Yep. Yep.
And without the information we'd like to be having with, hey, here's our audited numbers.
Real numbers. Yeah.
Here's what we know we're doing.
Yeah.
And so I think for you guys, decisions we need you to make is, what do you wanna give to community partners?
Yep.
We would love some guidance on if there's something you passionately want to see cut that we haven't done. I gave you a line by line, I don't know that that's how detailed we've given the budget before.
Yep.
You know, a, and it's, it's just to say, hey, is there somewhere we need to be leaner or something you see that we're not doing well? A big part of this will be having a year to really work under an accurate, well thought out budget and say, can we be leaner? Can we do a better job of, of how we run our rep problem, our programs and our goal programs? And can we be a little more intentional, you know, with how we utilize the resources we have? I think we can, I think we're probably gonna see we can come in under budget next year, and, and that's the goal. Um, so I think we really need those things from you, we need you to decide what you're gonna do for the mill, which is our next conversation. So we know, we know where we need to cut, where, what we need to do, what other plans you guys want to have. And we're gonna come together on the fourth, uh, and try to get those decisions from you.
Yep.
So that I can come back with a budget on the eleventh that you guys feel good about.
Yeah, that's fair.
About fire station fire and the.
Let's talk about that, I'm so sorry to say that.
Animal shelter?
Animal shelter.
Yeah.
They'd be too easy.
You can click through, tho- those are just for my first year.
Yeah, we still haven't had that conversation.
Yeah, you can go on, um.
Are we supposed to have that conversation on the fourth? Or do we?
Well, you'll make the decision on the fourth, so we can talk about it right now.
Right.
Um. I'm just gonna say, I put in the DA's office full request, I put in the animal shelters full request, which I think was four twelve.
Mm-hmm.
I'll send you guys all of these numbers, I'll do a memo and say, hey, here's the actual numbers, cause they keep, they've changed a couple of times. I wanna say, the fire department ended up at one point nine seven mil, was the last. And the DA's office, their last request was in the four hundred thousand range, I'm sorry, I don't have all these, I've been looking at so many.
But we don't have an option to not fund the DA.
Yeah, we do.
We do.
Well, we can decrease what we'll fund them.
Yeah, and we're, they've been given some pushback by all four counties and Elsa's been so helpful in meeting kinda with the other. I think Clear Creek reached out to her, um, the finance teams have all been working, the county managers have said. You know, what's happened in the past is the DA's office just sends us a number and we all pay it.
Mm-hmm.
They came back with a crazy increase and we all said.
Like two thirds.
Yeah.
Like three times the amount.
I, I wanna say like, ew, their increase by was a million?
Yeah.
And we all said, whoa, we're all making cuts, we're all pushing back, we're all saying no to extra staff, to all kinds of things. And. And we really need for you guys to line out to us where we're at, and what you're spending it on, and in getting into those conversations, I think we've found. Um, that they've added a lot of things to their budget, and we're like, hey, that's not, this is. This is not what we're all operating with, so we've given some pushback and have asked for them to come back with some revised numbers for us that are lower, all collectively.
The current proposal is that Summit and Clear Creek, and I think Eagle is my impression, they're all. Their twenty twenty six budgets, they're freezing everything at twenty twenty fours actuals, plus any COLA or insurance increases.
It's an Excel report.
So we are trying to get actuals for what the counties contributed in twenty twenty four. And look at that difference between twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five actuals and try to split the difference. And that's the only increase? That's, that's really wonky, all that to say that she proposed eight point eight million total. Eagle proposed seven point seven. And we are trying to bring it down closer to six point eight. So based on the conversation today, we'll see how close we can get to that, our actual contribution to that will be.
Much less than surrounding counties, but.
Way less than Eagles in particular, closer to Clear Creek's, but we have the least amount that we contribute, but it'll still be significant compared to her full amount.
Yeah.
More like a sixty six percent increase is what you're saying they?
It's like technically forty or two hundred percent.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. In the last three years, it's been a two hundred percent increase.
Well, that's, that's good news.
So that'll be our location, we'll see how much we can get out of it, for our three hundred and thirty eight thousand.
Yeah, which is better than what I was given, I mean, it was crazy.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, I, I just had her make a note so I can get a memo to you guys with those actual amounts that have been turned in. So what happens is people submit their budgets and then they change till they're at the final request. And then you guys will decide what you wanna do, we're kinda at that, hey, we've received final requests from the DA's, who we said, hey, give us a new request.
Yeah.
Um, kinda the same with the animal shelter and fire, we've said, whoa, can you work on that request? And then, you know, we've got animal shelter and fire this week, uh, to meet with those guys, but ultimately, whatever you guys are proving your budget is what I will pay up.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
So we'll actually certify, we'll actually have a special meeting on the fourth, where we actually make the decisions, and you'll get us a memo so we can actually.
Know the exact numbers.
Know the exact numbers. Can you give us a timeline of like what was originally requested and maybe what it's, how it has changed to now?
Yeah.
Just to help, cuz we, like, I have been in the fire or the animal.
Yeah, say, hey, this is what I got in October or whatever, when people sent me things, and here's where it's come down to, because people have decreased things.
Yeah. That would be really helpful.
Um. So the mill levy, so I have a mill levy. Uh, cuz that's the other thing I'll need you guys to decide.
Okay.
Uh, earnestly, I could build the budget off of what I think you'll do and what I think we need, and then you could certify the mill, and then I'd have to go and amend our budget. That feels like creating an extra step, so I am asking for you guys to make the decision on the fourth, what do you wanna do? And tell me, and I'll go ahead and build our budget off of that.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not in the middle, I'm not trying to amend and then go submit it to DOLIT, makes it pretty wonky, and I think that's how we make mistakes.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, hey, give me the direction, once you've decided, that's what we're gonna put in and what we're gonna certify. Um, because you certify the mills for the whole county, so you'll get, or the assessor has all of the, the heat blocks and mills for the mills.
Like, there's so many different mills, it's like, this is a tricky one for me to wrap that around.
There are. But really, as theirs, they all turn it into us, we certify them.
Um.
Yeah.
And then we submit that, we submit them on behalf of everyone.
When I look at them historically, it's like, it feels like we're at the highest it's ever been.
We're just a past.
Even though we're not as high as we could go, but it's like, when I look at from twenty twelve up to, you know, now, although the, the twenty three budget, I don't, can't find the mill. Page on that one, in that PDF anywhere, but, um, say, uh, twenty one.
They dropped it in twenty two. Twenty three?
I think they dropped it in the years that we got a bunch of COVID money.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
And there was, and it was before the state offered the, or did that like growth cap that relieved property taxes, they dropped it.
But in twenty one, we were at thirty eight point one nine two, we're at thirty nine point five right now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it's like human services have its, has its own mill, insurance has its own mill, capital acquisitions, which. Between, it was at four mills in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, went to point seven mills, and there's a story there that I don't know.
Yeah.
Mine closure.
They never put the suite in the capital acquisition bucket, which it really should have contracted there.
I mean, that, that, that one's all over the place.
We paid for it, we just paid for it, now the general mill, instead of saying, hey, that's actually capital assets.
Mine closure mills are another one that are all over the place. An ambulance, that's a, ambulance is huge, I mean, how many, it's almost like we got ambulances running all over town all day long or something, but. There's three point eight, three point s- six, or three point three, um, and that's a huge fluctuation. Or a huge amount, sorry, um, so, yeah, let's talk about this.
So homeowner's pay tax based on the assessed value of their property, this creates a stable local revenue source for county services each year. The mill levy is the tax rate applied to each a thousand dollars of assessed value, changing the mill changes how much revenue flows into the county budget. Property tax dollars fund day to day services like roads, public safety, health, uh, facilities. Which directly affect resident's safety, mobility and quality of life. Um, so, we have built our budget off of forty mills. Um, I should have done the thirty nine and a half, I'm sorry, didn't do that scenario, I will send it out. Um, if you guys, I think it's around. It's around a hundred and, well, again, look at the vast, yeah, if you don't mind.
Nope.
Yeah, it's about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. A half mil, so if you drop us down, it will drop us that amount and I'll go cut it, um, which is totally fine for me, I just need you to tell me what you wanna do, cuz I will make it happen. For, I will make it balanced before we're adopting the thing. So, right now, you've got, you know, the amount I've still gotta cut, the three hundred and, brought my paper in, was, what is it? Your three hundred and thirty seven, seven nine seven, I've gotta cut. If I cut that, it would get us to here for mills, uh, if you tell me you want to mill lower on the fourth, um, I will do so. And we will go find places to cut that, um.
You'll have to cut five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars then, instead of the three thirty.
Yes.
Can someone help me understand this a little bit more? So, say your home is, for argument's sake, your home is worth one hundred thousand dollars. And we raise the mill a half point, which is this scenario, how much does that add to your yearly tax bill?
Can you do that for me?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's just, I, I wanna be able to tell people like, hey, you know, here's how much it could have gone up. We're only gonna do it, this is projected at a half a point, and we're, we're scrambling with this.
It's okay, we can, we can do, I don't want you to feel that this has to happen, I want you to do whatever feels.
I will, I know if.
You want to do, I will make it happen.
I feel like I don't wanna raise the mills, but if we're bare, if the county's treading water with where we're at right now. We're barely treading water and there's a tsunami wave of inflation coming at us and everything else that raises costs. I wanna be able to have an honest conversation of like, everything in everyday life is going up in cost.
Yeah, that's.
And you expect us to keep make, providing the same level of services with the same amount of dollars, it just doesn't, the math doesn't math.
I think what's been hard is inflation has made everything more expensive, and it doesn't mean that the amount that we have to run off of is, is really. Changing at the same rate that things are expen, are costing us.
Shrinking.
It's also why the conversation yesterday was so important. We have taken on a lot of items that aren't just our statutory duties, so it's not like we're just covering. The things we're statutorily required to do, we're covering a lot of other things that are a really big public benefit, and that's why we had the conversation of saying, hey. If rec or if, um, what else we, tourism were, you know.
Fifty dollars, fifty bucks. Okay, thank you.
Yes, I just did it too.
Yeah.
All right, and then a point, fifty dollars, so.
Thank you.
This, one mill is one dollar per house.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
You're assessed though at only six point something percent of your, if you're residential.
I love it. Six point seven, six five.
So, if fifty bucks is the answer, then your yearly bill's gonna go up two hundred and fifty dollars on your average, five hundred thousand dollar life house. So. Half a point, that's, I mean, two hundred and fifty bucks is, you know, it's.
Yeah, but then you break it.
Well, they, they don't, they don't assess the whole value of the home, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So, so if you have a five hundred thousand dollar home, here, they, they have this ratio, that they multiply it.
You're assessed on six per, six point seven percent of it.
Yeah.
Was it, so is it assessed differently than commercial?
This home, actual value, you only get assessed on this much.
Yeah. Total assessment. So you're only paying mills on the assessed value, not the actual value?
Correct.
Yeah.
So that, that.
That's why we set it up.
It's, it's almost impossible to explain.
That's why the mill is complicated.
Yeah, no, but like your average, I, I just wanna be able to say like, hey, if we raise the mill a half a point.
Yeah.
If we raise the mill a point.
Yeah.
Your, your actual cost per homeowner is gonna be.
Fifty bucks for every assessed value, which is different than your actual value.
Yeah.
And that, I think that if you.
So fifty bucks for a hundred thousand, twenty five thousand, that's, you know, twelve dollars and fifty, so whatever.
But then you can actually break it up into like, hey, you're, you're giving the sheriff's department eight more dollars next year.
Yes.
Hey, you're giving, you're, you're tossing two bucks to our rec department.
Yeah.
You're.
That's what I wanna be able to say to people, like, look, you're gonna hear a lot of bitching and moaning, but.
Ooh, nice drop.
Um, you, but the actual cost per person is, you know, roughly this amount of dollars. And you want us to keep doing all the things, and, you know, we're gonna, we have to figure out how to make it happen. Everything's going up in price, which means every dollar we have to work with is actually shrinking. And it's this unsustainable model of the county doing all the things, if we're gonna keep doing that, then at least for now, this is with this.
Can, is that kind of the kind of thing that staff could put together, or this is also a project that we could actually work on, is actually communicating what the half a mil would have.
People work on it right now.
Now, I think it would be both, I think it, I think right in this very moment, it's something I can work on, I'm just trying to get it done, but I think in the future.
Okay. No.
We can actually be doing this because we're not closing an audit back to back of them, you know, having nine hundred people leave.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Years of deferred.
And replacing them all of them.
Deferred.
Yes, we didn't lose nine hundred people, I just covered like five things for a minute, but I, in the absence of data, we actually are getting the right data and humans. To help us like, be able to say, hey, this is really where we're at and what's happening.
And I also wanna see what it looks like if we don't raise the mills. And we can actually say, you know, all the hard work that's happening by the leadership staff here. This is why we're able to do this, you know, like, it's, if we can carve out, say, someone who's asking us for a lot of money, who might have thrown us under the bus recently, and we can say, you know what? We're not giving you very much, and it's really cool, now we don't have to raise bill. I don't know, like, if there's, if there's, I, I'd love to see what that scenario looks like.
Be helpful to know how much we, how much revenue we've take, we expect to take in versus the last couple of years.
I think that is gonna take a little bit to really, A. When people put in revenue numbers that I was like. You haven't done it for three years, let's be real with ourselves, uh, which I did.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Uh, well, you know, people are projecting what they think they'll bring in, and so we had a lot of moments of.
Okay.
Let's do your two year look back. This number feels wildly optimistic. Could you assess what you've done for the last two years and be real with yourself, and let's come back with a different number that actually makes sense? Uh, we did that this year, cuz you can't just. You'd be like, oh, look, I'm gonna make a million dollars, even though you only made like two grand for two years. You can't just keep chucking a million dollars in the revenue line, you gotta be like. No, Bob, you made four grand the last two years, let's, maybe it's six, not a mil. You know, and those conversations can only happen when you have that actual look back at, hey, here's really where things shook out. And so we have said, hey, you need to actually build revenues based off of, that are close to what you've done in the past, not just be like. Overly excited, I also think we can start to really look at what are we charging for services, what are we charging for permits, what are we charging for rec? What are, what are the amounts we're charging and where can we really have intelligent discussions about, okay, here's what it takes to provide some of the things we actually charge for.
Yeah.
Are we charging appropriately, are we charging too much? Uh, and starting to ask ourselves, okay, what makes sense? What helps us maintain our facilities, not just watch them crumble around us and start to, to really say, hey. Twenty twenty six is the year we really can start to work on getting, and it takes a little bit, you have to collect, what are we actually doing? Know that data point first, and then to say, hey, could we change? Or could we outthink a problem rather than throw money at it, and I think that's where.
Yes.
We're gonna actually have the bandwidth to help directors do that, like people who are doing A jobs, they don't have the time to outthink a problem.
Mm-hmm.
They throw money at it because they're in a crisis, and that's really why we've got, you know, Josh and extra support. Um, for Rachel, for staff to say, hey, I know you worked your eightieth hour this week. Let me help you think through this problem, and then let's get the correct IT resources.
Yeah. You're asking, instead of asking, then run a third mouse.
Yeah, it's like, let us help you run the mouse and let's get it dialed before we just throw money at it, so like the CDLs. Not sending someone to Denver and paying for their stay for one CDL at a time. Why not just pay half the cost and ask someone to come train our people all at once to get their CDLs?
Yeah, and that doesn't mean we gotta raise permits for like people building, but like maybe someone wants to have a special event or a party or something, and it's like, oh, it's ten bucks.
That's something we do here.
It's like, no, it's gonna be a hundred bucks this time, you know, whatever, you know, parking tickets, I don't know, littering fines.
So I did put other mill scenarios in here, voters approved to mill up to forty one point nine nine. Is that right?
Yes.
Um, and we kind of put the different, like, by half a mil increments in here. Of the discretionary funds, the extra funds that you would have to put towards things. Um, discretionary funds, I would say, are towards the nice to haves, or in our case, probably toward delayed maintenance.
Yeah.
Um, maybe a little bit before we're working on the nice to haves, cuz we, we do actually have a responsibility to maintain the facilities to the best of our ability. When they're public facilities, so that's something we're gonna be.
Raising these things does such a small, it's really a drop in the bucket.
Just tiny. For some people, that's their annual income, you know?
Oh, we didn't do discretionary, that's okay, we will get it in there, yeah, and I'll make those thirty nine and a half increments. But you can see the increments.
Yeah, you could extrapolate what it would be in there.
It's a hundred and eighty.
Yeah.
I wonder too, if we're extending, if we could also add that column kinda that you were talking about, Andy, about. What does this mean in terms of dollars for like a, a median property?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, or, or we could use whatever number, a hundred thousand, if you just wanted to see.
Yeah.
That'll look like, there could be another column here that tells that's true.
It would be hard to figure out an average home value, assessed value and what, you know.
What it means.
On an average house in Lake County, this is what you're probably seeing.
It's sixty bucks for half a mil.
True, yeah. Did, did Bill welcome to see us?
For a year.
These are, we, these are, these are from Liz in Wolf County, but we can update these if.
Sixty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I can work as well.
Mm-hmm, so.
That really is, I mean, that's a cup of coffee at a drive thru somewhere in, somewhere down.
The money's nothing, but the, the concept is.
It is, it's the idea that.
And I can see the article in paper, wishers raised the mill limit to four, forty one point nine mil.
Well, that's called PR, is also like making sure that people understand when you're doing that, what does that mean?
Yeah, and that's why I think in that article, you know, the very. Yeah, and that's why I think in that article, you know, the very first sentence or three, it's like, this does only translate into an extra twenty bucks a year per person, you know, per homeowner, not per person.
Yeah.
You know, and being real about it, and.
Laying out some problems like that liner is a huge problem.
Yeah, and you know, like, do you guys wanna start, what's it gonna cost you more to do, drive to JP County to dump your trash? Or let us raise the mills and fix it up? Or, you know, the, the ball joints on your car, or let us start getting more money into the roads, um. Paying for uh babysitting while your kid could be in a rec program, or, you know.
Six dollars, it's six dollars for a five hundred thousand dollar house, to raise a half a mill, for the whole year.
For a year, six, that's why it's such a drop in the budget.
The six dollar taxing.
That's why it's only a hundred eighty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's in the low, yeah.
I just, no check with math, you know, right?
It's a hundred, it's only a hundred eighty thousand or something?
In, yeah, perhaps.
Well, I'm, you're on cover.
I have a, your overall budget.
A hundred and eighty thousand, that's.
Yeah.
Still, yeah.
Plus that's residential, not commercial.
When you're, when you advertise that a, a whole county, like, you know, property, it's, it's probably like, oh, it's one, six bucks, huh?
Yeah.
The math, yeah.
So, I only put this in here because we know, we received things from climax about two years out, I think, is what it was, and so this is the trajectory, like, they're projected to do a little less this year, these are projected. I did not create this, the assessor creates this table. So, yeah, um, so we do know that, you know, they had a pretty good times, it looks like they're in twenty-three and the twenty-four went up, but twenty-five is projected to be lower, so we'll capture less from climax mine in the future.
Wow, that's way to be lower.
This is just trying to be that, hey, this is what's, where, we were headed.
Total revenue loss over two million from last year.
Sorry. That's projected, and these projections were done by Evelyn Mark.
Wow. Um.
Two point two.
That was minus twenty twenty, or twenty one, but, twenty-two.
Ooh, twenty-one.
That's, they would've, that would've been them paying for their COVID years.
Shutting, shutting down, yeah. Skeleton crew.
But yeah, that's like, that's rough.
The twenty nineteen, uh, are, are these the, the year-to-date, or is that like that two or three-year lag catching up, okay?
So, that's when we get paid that, not when it was produced.
Okay. Okay, so twenty-one was the two-year lag from twenty nineteen being shut down to a skeleton crew for COVID?
No, they went gangbusters in COVID.
Then how come the twenty-one revenues are so bad if twenty nineteen was our?
It's the twenty-two that you have to look at, cause they produced a lot, and then they sold it, and then they reaped the,
Oh, God.
they got the money, and then they paid their taxes. It takes two, three years.
Alright, gotcha, gotcha, okay, so, so we're, I mean, it's average. You know, you see some lows, you see some highs, seven point eight projected.
And we should, remember when we went up there and they were like, hey, the best thing you can do is have a really good relationship with the actual, like, foreman of climax, because that's the person who knows how much is getting produced. And that is what can project you two to three years out, what you're gonna be getting in your revenue. It's, other than that, it's hard to get it.
All right, wrapping up, what I have to say to give you guys to continue to talk, time to continue to talk, is we review two twenty twenty-six capital requests. I think we really need to have our audited numbers in, in hand before we really amend our budget to say, we wanna use any reserves we have for this, this, or this, um, I'm going to estimate them if we don't have the audited numbers back, because I have to, to turn this budget into DOL, um, but I really want to have those audited numbers in hand before, um, we actually make decisions with it. If you guys are okay with that, um.
When you, can you like get those, please?
I am working right now to get the Fed to give me the login to the treasury portal where we submitted our ARPA reports. As soon as they let me in there and I can hand those over to our auditor, it's kind of in the holdup, that's the last thing he really needs to like tie a bow. They've kept working, but I'm not in Vermont, and the account I was created doesn't have like county government delegated to me, nor the finance department, and the Fed has been preoccupied with big check, so we have been reaching out to them and asking for every opportunity to try to get in there and get those reports, it's the last thing we need. Uh, to, I think we need to make some adjustments to our ARPA fund balance. It looks like those ARPA funds were spent but not reported accurately by the humans who were doing that at the end of twenty-three and twenty-four, which is not the people who were here. It sounds like there was just maybe miscommunication, and that's fine, it's just, you would make an adjustment, or the auditor helps you make an adjustment to claim those correctly, and make sure that what you did matches the reports. I can't say what we've done on the books matches or doesn't match the reports, cause I don't have the reports. So, we are getting those reports, and as soon as that happens, we're gonna work to make sure that those things are correct, so we, if we need to restate anything we can, and actually move forward with uh audited numbers.
I need to do some homework about what ARPA funds mean for local governments.
Sorry, that's.
I hear it mentioned so much, I'm like, sounds complex.
Q four.
I need to learn more about those.
You guys can look through, come back for questions for me. The twenty twenty-six budget, we want to maintain essential services. We've kept any, we don't really have a lot of new commitments, we have some old commitments, like the summit stage, some other IGAs that we wanna look at. We pay insurance for a lot of different, um, items that are part of agreements with other people, and Stuart has really taken on the project of working with CTSI to say, hey, can you tell us how much are we paying for insurance out at Skid Cooper, and how much insurance are we paying uh for different facilities where we have agreements, or out of the, you know, motocross, you know, there, there's just a lot of things that go into our insurance.
Yeah, well, I look at things like that, and I wonder sometimes, like.
What do we need to do to get it to be like we're doing, hey, can we change our contract, well, hey, just makes sense.
Looks like when Chris was like, can we uh sell the land that the motocross track is on to that nonprofit and let them do their thing, you know? Or, there's some conversations to be had about other larger entities that work with like that.
I think that's why Matt and I are like, hey, we really wanna get a lot of the IGAs back up to say, okay, let's, let's think about all of the costs associated solely with this agreement and know what those actual dollars are to say, hey, does this make sense, are there other creative solutions? And do we have a place where we track all of our contracts, one by one, that's clear, we track them in Tyler, because we have to have them for the audit, which didn't happen before, now we attach those contracts to the, to the transaction, but that doesn't give Matt and I the running log of, okay, on November first, I always know this IGA is coming up, and I need to have reviewed it before this point. He and I are really working to get systems in place to say, okay, we know that this is where it's at, we know how many dollars is associated with the contract, what needs to happen. And just part of that is having professional staff who work together to get those things in place. Um, we're not gonna be perfect in year one, but we certainly are gonna try to make it better. And then mill letting.
Straight to jail.
Great. Alex, you have your talk.
Here, but you're still gonna work, here's a desk, your laptop, and it's out.
You can get out of those, or sometimes you can't, I guess.
So, I'll work on a memo to follow back up to each of you with.
Thank you.
Would it be great to just list in that thing, hey, these are the decisions we're gonna be looking at, December fourth?
Yes.
Um, so you guys can show up, and you can still ask us questions there if you need to, and you can ask more questions now, and if I don't have an answer, I'll be honest and say, I don't know, I gotta look into that. So I don't know what other questions you might have, or what you wanna know.
Do you need to do a memo, or can we just write it down in a notebook right here?
Yeah, you wanna just tell us?
I don't have a memory.
Okay, that's fine, no problem.
I wanna go actually look at what we put in for the animal shelter, man.
Yeah, and you also have to send us a memo anyway, so.
Yeah.
On the animal shelter.
If, um.
Sorry.
I would love to say, I've got every, no, my memory is, I have a lot of them, cause I've looked at it way too much.
Very impressive.
Yeah.
Well, good job, Candace.
Heck, yeah.
I mean, it's, of all the things that give me concern with where every local government is struggling, I have a wealth of confidence in the, the team that you have been put together here, you guys are crushing it.
Everybody just cares.
Yeah.
A lot.
Yeah, I think, there's a lot of counties out there that have people who have checked out, working in that county, like.
You know?
Can I, uh, I do have a question?
Yeah.
It's, it's not a big picture. You know how we had that, and we still do how it opened, the um, like, questions and comments about the budget, and I you sent all the questions to us, but could you share all the comments too, that have been made?
From the town hall?
No, yeah, any, any questions or comments that have been made from the, I'm, I'm assuming that comments have come in through the.
No. Yeah. QR code.
QR code and the fill-in form on the website.
Yeah.
It would just be nice to see all of that, you don't have to answer everything, I just wanted, I'm just curious about what people are, are, are saying.
Or, it's accessible somewhere, where do we find it?
Yeah, if it's in a place already, great. Cause if there are twenty comments in there being like, normal, that have a trend, I feel like it would be important for us to know that. Thank you.
Can you, yep. We wanna get it in a list for that.
Thank you. Now, I'm really excited about the fourth, this is all really so impressive, I feel like you and your team should be really proud of yourselves, Candace. Please send our compliments to the chefs.
Um.
I will, they have, our finance team has really worked hard.
Is there anything between now and then that we can do to help the three of us?
Make decisions on the fourth, so I'm not scrambling, I, you know, the picture that I came into last year on the thirteen, the finance staff ops, they were here until three, four AM, the night before, and that's how errors get made.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Because the timeline of making the decisions and the information they had to make decisions with, you know, because just two audits behind, um, you know, it, it just, budget I've done, things got in place, you know, but it, it also is, is where you're prone to make errors, you're not thinking intelligently, you're throwing money at problems instead of saying, hey, we have a five-year plan, we can do this this year, you know, and that's just really hard on staff too. Like, to, to be here till, till three AM, three days in a row after working your full day, it's like, not right.
We had this saying.
It's not right for us to do that to people, you know?
Like, from purely a social aspect lens, like, being out and about, nothing good happens after eleven PM. If you're working, nothing good is like happening after like dinnertime.
Well, people are just a little goofy at that point, too, and, and, and budget season's budget season, like, finance people know budget season's tough, yes, you're gonna work some really long hours, not like all year long,
Yeah.
but you certainly don't want that last moment change to be in the day before it has to be done.
Yeah.
And that's why I'm trying to say, hey, give me six days if I'm making any real big adjustments.
Yeah. Great.
Okay.
We will absolutely do that, I promise, really, as much as I can.
Okay?
Awesome.
Well, yeah.
Thank you.
So much, thank you.
Yeah. Oh, I didn't know that comes, I'm sorry. It's, it's, it's fine, it's fine. I'm sorry.
Oh, the yellow man saying thanks?
Yeah.
I put a nice photo of the Colorado River and was like, just, you know, it wasn't like, it was fine, it was fine.
Sorry, Sarah, thank you so much.
I just swallowed it, you know, but I.
Great.
Okay.
You guys are awesome, it's like the uh, the, the bright spot in like what is a very stormy and turbulent kinda situation for every county in the state, and probably many in the country, right now.
Oh, yeah, not the only ones.
We are in uh, good hands, it gives me confidence and hope that we get through this.
You're gonna get it.
What's to come is gonna be freaking awesome.
Yes, watch out, twenty-seven.
Yeah. All I know is I would be very excited to just be doing one years for some work.
Yes.
In that year.
It's like a bit of despair.
And that, that's, that's after December, right?
Yes, after we get, so, because our books are so caught up, we're not gonna be like scrambling to close the whole year while doing a back-to-back audit and then trying to get the budget together, and it's like, it's just gonna feel so sane, and I'm really excited for that moment.
Yeah.
Yeah. I wish the community knew this kinda stuff too, you know, it's just um, not easily digestible, it's not easy to communicate, and it's black and white, it's just, um, we're, we're.
That's also just, you know, COVID happened, they, they happened to switch accounting systems as COVID was hitting, so you know, like, the accounting system didn't get set up in the best way, the people from Tyler didn't come up here and work with people one-on-one, everything shut down. And, you know, it was only one or two people doing everything for finance for the whole county. And then you come back from COVID, and there's been a lot of turnover, and before I stepped in in December, came in December one last year, and, or whatever the first Monday is in December, and they hadn't had a finance director since July, I believe, and the whole team was new. Like, imagine walking into this and you're like, oh, wow, like, you didn't know what you, what had happened, you didn't know, know it had been here that the system, the Tyler system was working, it is a lot, and you know what a lot of people do, is they show up and they're like, this is too much.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna walk away.
Yeah.
And that over and over, I mean, it just really requires people who care enough to stick out the really hard stuff, to work the extra time, to have everyone be putting the hate towards them as if they've, they've done, as if any of those humans were here in twenty-three, they weren't. You know, it just takes people who are really dedicated to say, you know what, I can see that it's going to be better, and I'm willing to stay here and continue to do it, to see it be better, and not just walk out the door, so, I don't know, we owe our finance team a lot.
Yeah.
Not being finished.
There's a lot of you, Candace, that you inspired, that is, a lot of readers, you.
It's not even me, they.
But just do it, I just, just do it, get it on my.
I don't know, we're working hard and we can see that it's gonna be better, and that's the thing, because people have to be able to see that better to stay for it, so, I don't know, I know we're gonna get there.
You did your own, you know?
I love our people.
I'm sorry, I'm not laughing, that.
She's exhausted. I'm allowed to, she thinks I care, and I've had like three hours of sleep, yeah, so.
When are you gonna get a break, Candace?
After the budget, on the twelve, do not call me, or eleven, call me the next Monday, give me a weekend. But, I don't know, I just care a lot, and I see how hard our people, you know, keep showing up, so.
You're getting a rock.
That's, heck, yeah, Candace.
You're getting a rock.
Let's stop the meeting.
It is eleven eleven, eleven twelve, uh, we will conclude this work session when we kind of work on commissioners.
Thanks, Candace.
You're so getting a rock.